Let's call our meeting to order. All rise. Let us pray. Gracious God, we come at the end of another day, Lord, just saying thank you for letting us be a part of it, Lord, and using us. I thank you, Father, for this council that helps me as we run our city, Lord. I just pray that we do it. It's pleasing to you and all that live here. Father, for those that are here tonight that care about our city and what we do, I thank you, Lord. I pray that they be blessed. Lord, there's been death in our community again, and I just pray, Father, for those families, Lord, as they struggle to get through this, Lord, I just pray that you comfort and send the Holy Spirit to keep us ever mindful of your love for us. Be with us now. Let us conduct this business in a Christian fashion, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me as we pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, do want to thank all of you that are here tonight. Appreciate you coming out. Candy, would you please call the roll?
David Sisson.
Here.
Jeff White.
Here.
Tia Wesson.
Here.
Bo Pettit.
Here.
Jamie Waller.
Here.
Wayne Simpson.
Here.
Steve Nipper.
Here.
James Jefferson.
Here.
Minutes from our October meeting were in your packet. I trust you've had time to look those over. There's no additions or corrections to the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion for Mr. Jefferson, second for Mr. Sisson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First item of all business is to revisit the water meter lid. This is not good on my right. This is very good on my left. We continue to have people that are driving across these plastic lids. If you notice an increase in your water bill by $100, you've probably got a bad lid. I think we're going to start leaving the bad lids on your porch. You'll notice a new lid in your yard. We have to have new lids so we can keep the readless meter top working. Parking your cars over your meters are not going to stop us from reading your water meter. Four total. Want to thank the four people that are watching from Facebook Live for two minutes.
We have seven.
That number's been 300. How many you have, Mike?
Seven.
Got seven. Okay. So the people already left for Thanksgiving. Okay. Let's get back to meter lids, folks. This cost us money, and we have to pass that cost on to you. So please be attentive to this and try. You know, we've got to keep the water and sewer system in business. So let's move on to new business. And let me back up just a minute. Could I get a motion in a second to add a piece of business?
Some of. Say.
A motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That new business, as I told you all in our finance committee meeting the other day, that I had been working with Jet Asphalt in El Dorado on 68 and a half acres in our business park. 64?
64.56.
Okay. 64.56 acres in our business park. They have agreed to the asking price of $10,000 an acre. For the media, that will be for insurance purposes, is what I was told from Jet Asphalt. They have no immediate plans for that property, but it does have the rail line through it. For those of you that took time to go out and look, the 25 acres is on the east side of the street, is the better of the acreage, the 40. On the west side is the low washed out. Would take a lot of money. We do have a resolution for that, Ms. Leader, when you get that water lid taken care of. We're multitasking tonight, folks. Y'all bear with us.
Okay.
We'll have a reading of the resolution, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city a real estate contract to sell certain real property located in the Harvey Couch Business Park to Jet Asphalt and Rock Company, Inc., and for other purposes. Whereas upon its dissolution in 2018, the Magnolia Economic Development Corporation donated to the city of Magnolia, Arkansas, the city approximately 262 acres in the Harvey Couch Business Park, which is the business park, which was created by M E D C to encourage and promote economic development in Magnolia, Arkansas. And whereas, including the Magnolia Police Department headquarters, the city currently owns approximately 257.75 acres in the business park, of which approximately 104 acres has been certified as a select site by Entergy Arkansas, with approximately 64.56 acres cleared and shovel ready. And whereas, Jet Asphalt and Rock Company, Inc., Jet Asphalt, an El Dorado-based paving aggregate and mixture manufacturer and contractor that owns approximately 91 acres on Highway 82 in Magnolia, has offered to purchase the 64.56 acre parcel from the city for $645,600, the purchase price. And whereas, the city is agreeable to selling the 64.56 acre parcel to Jet Asphalt for the purchase price upon certain terms and conditions as set forth in the real estate contract attached hereto. And whereas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 1454-302B, the mayor and city clerk may execute a real estate contract and conveyance when authorized by a resolution in writing and approved by a majority vote of the city council present and participating. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Magnolia, Arkansas, in regular session assembled, that the mayor and city clerk be, and they are hereby authorized, to execute a real estate contract with substantially the same terms and conditions and in substantially the same form as that attached hereto, to execute a special warranty deed pursuant thereto, and to execute such other necessary documents and instruments, and to take any and all other actions necessary and proper to consummate the sale as contemplated therein.
There was an appraisal done in June of 2022. I had that appraisal. It was for $10,000 an acre, and that's been our asking price, and that's what they're giving. I do have on the deed a perpetual easement. If you guys noticed, there was a little concrete turn that stops at the track. Jet will be responsible to get across the track to get to their property. We'll have, as Donna Ray tells me, perpetual is kind of lifetime. We'll be able to get to our property. And we do own property behind the county fairgrounds, so I'm going to seek access north of the fairgrounds to give us two ways in. Any questions?
Can we get a copy of the real estate contract when it's done?
Sure can.
Okay. Who's going to have that? Candy?
Probably me. I'll get it in a hurry to get to you.
Okay.
In fact, if I need to, I'll just have the repairs, the title company just email it to everybody.
Okay.
One other item of note. There's no restricted covenants filed on record related to the business park. But for instance, this part, there's 104 acre parcel that's a select site, and part of the materials that are marketing that is restricted covenants that were done in 2000 by M E D C. They weren't filed on record, but that was being marketed with that 104 acre size, as these would be some terms and conditions for use and how the property would be used. And it, of course, it's the council's pleasure, but I would suggest that we look at that. I've got language in the contract, a place marker for that, and can find you a copy of what those potential covenants were or are that will be marketed with 104 acres. It's probably about 50/50. About 50% of this shows up now in our zoning regulations, but there's about half of the under 50%, so about 25% is actually contrary to what our city says right now. So we've got something a little stricter, or we were anticipating something a little more strict for the business park. And then there's about 25% that only shows up potentially, you know, that's not in our zoning, but that we would potentially want to look at. So that's, you know, along with the actual in-practice pathway where that ingress easement will go. In addition to that issue, this is an issue that kind of Jet Asphalt will begin to work with us on, so.
Did we have any other plans as a city for that area?
No. That property has been marketed as long as I've been mayor, soon be 14 years. The last property, the only two properties built on the business park since I've been mayor was Elliott Electric, who has since left town, Apostolic Church, holds church service there, and the Adult Education Unemployment Office. The state built a new building adjacent to that building. From there, the utility stopped, so you've got to push utilities on out. All of the property in that park to the west is all, I'm just going to say, six to 10 foot lower than the street. So to do anything, you're going to spend way more than you should. Truth be told, not a very good site for a business park. A high line kills you. And that railroad that we thought would be great has never had a spur. The cost of putting a spur is something that, you know, the city's talked about for years in economic development, and it's just not financially fixable.
You know, we looked at that when we were talking about, we were talking about doing the sports complex, and you know, I walked that, and it just got some, it just has some issues.
Right.
You know, and, but this sounds like a good deal to me.
Maybe, when you go with Mr. Sisson, maybe in the day, that was what our forefathers thought would make a good business park, but it doesn't. It's got just, it's got too many things that hurt us because the power lines crisscross and go every which way. You know, if given the opportunity in the right place came along, we might one day revisit that as to a true business park, but...
What's going to happen there with the water?
That is, that is up to the people that come. That is up to Jet. We, we're selling, how many acres?
65.
The $10,000 an acre, play in half of the closing cost to get the perpetual easement, and we're done.
Okay.
And Jet is only buying for insurance purposes. They have no immediate plans tomorrow for the property.
No rail to involve?
So what Jennifer brought up, is that something that we, you could talk to Jet about, or is that even a possibility?
I can have a conversation with Jet, but I don't want to see us lose this deal.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got easement from them. You know, they're responsible. They've worked a deal with the railroad to get across. They've, they've done their homework, too.
One thing that might help the council is to essentially look at, so that's zoned industrial, too, I believe. Look at the zoning rights around, and if that satisfies the council specifically for the business park in comparison to what historically it had, you know, restrictions it had been, then we just rely on the zoning rights.
And what?
Or if there's something, but maybe there's one or two things that you say, well, we need to tackle, you know, then we could, I'm not, certainly not advising that we throw the kitchen sink at it. We just want to be mindful of, there are others out there, they're making use of it, you know, and we would hope in future it's developed somehow, so.
What Mr. McCaffrey and I discussed that he would like, and it's zoned that way, is it's maybe going to be a rock pile, a gray stone pile, come in off the rail and offload it there, reload it the truck and leave out. Or he did ask, in 50 or 60 years, or 100 years, or never, could it be an asphalt plant, which it meets all those specifications, which we all know that anybody paying attention, that Jet's new asphalt plant is going to go just west of the travel center. But when you're in the fishing business, you want to know there's fish, or when you're in the nonprofit organization, you want to know there's something out there. He just wants to know if the day ever comes that he had to put in, or not he, but someone, whoever owns Jet Asphalt, and there's nothing to stop it now.
Would that, would their access, if it were a rock moving plant, would their access be down the same roadway that the rest of the business park is?
It will be. Maybe 10, 15 trucks a day. We've had a discussion on, because we don't know the condition, what the, what the bed of that street is.
Probably have to beef it up.
Probably, when it, I would say that it was just enough to get by, and we've had that conversation that, you know, we'll work together in getting that done, and getting that street put back to what it probably needs to be to take care of everybody. But now, the beer trucks leave in and out, the big trucks are coming in and out at night, and little trucks are leaving out during the day. I hadn't noticed any problems with it as of yet.
I drove it.
Yeah.
Would you contemplate an exit out onto Fairground Road?
Would like to get out onto the Mill Rider Trail. Would do that either in a conversation with the county judge on the north end of the county fairgrounds. Had visited with someone from S A U on the south end of the fairgrounds, but that is a true wetlands, so that's just, that's a no-no. So...
There is reference on a 2018 survey, there's a reference to an ingress egress easement on our eastern border. I guess it would be north of the fairgrounds, kind of between, I don't know, it's between that and what used to be the church or the next parcel over, but it looks like there may be potentially something that follows that lane line, and it gets to essentially one of our timbered tracks there. But it would be, if that exists, it would be a potential that are interesting.
And what council's talking about, right at the fairgrounds, at the north end, if you'll stop and look in the overgrown thicket, there's a house sitting there, and it, that property line runs along adjacent with the Apostolic Church. Years ago, many years ago, we had cleaned out from our property coming that way, pushing out for a future road, and then we got busy one day and we never went back. But if you do an area, you'll see where we've come through one of our pine plantations headed to Mill Rider Trail. So we've started that, but we can work with that. We've had no interest in the 80 acre pine plantation that's adjacent to the fairgrounds. I'd love to see the city and county one day go together on a big show barn on that property, because that's, that's dollars and cents, but I don't, but I'll work to get us access to Mill Rider Trail. Any other questions about this? How does the council feel? Do y'all want me to move forward with it and collect the money?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item of business is a resolution, the contract service. As most of you know, my daughter's on a dump truck. Jerry and I have been talking for the last year and a half, year. What do we do when it's time? I am making aware to you tonight that my daughters would like to work for one dump truck with the city, probably starting in October when we start paving. Jerry and I, our concern is, once President Trump takes office, either between fossil fuel and lithium work, as soon as our oil and gas commissioners, and I know they're out there, are going to get settled on a rate, trucking's going to be the critical part of us getting our streets paved, because we've got to get that asphalt here. I am simply making you aware that I would like to work for the city. You have the option to deny that, or you have the option to agree with that. I will get no more, no less, or my daughters will get no more, no less than anybody else. So making you aware of that. Would you read the resolution, Ms. Leader, please?
A resolution authorizing the city to contract with M G V Trucking LLC for hauling services. Whereas the city of Magnolia has need for hauling, delivery, and dumping services, and the city wishes to contract with a third-party contractor to provide such services. And whereas, the city desires to enter into a contract with M G V Trucking LLC to provide hauling, delivery, and dumping services upon the same terms and conditions, including compensation rate as other contractors providing similar services to the city for the same project. Conditioned upon the execution of an appropriate contract in substantially the same form as the proposed agreement attached hereto as Exhibit 1. And whereas, M G V Trucking LLC is owned and operated by Ashton Dixon and Madeline Otwell, who are the children of Parnell Land, mayor of the city of Magnolia. And whereas, Arkansas Code annotated 1442-107 prohibits any council member, municipal official, or municipal employee from being interested directly or indirectly in the profits of any contract for the furnishings of supplies, equipment, or services to the municipality unless the governing body has enacted an ordinance specifically permitting council members, municipal officials, and municipal employees to conduct business with the municipality and prescribing the extent of such authority. And whereas, Section 2-56 of the Magnolia Code requires the city to, one, obtain approval of the city council before conducting business with a council member, municipal officer, or municipal employee, when the purchase or contract price will exceed $2,500 annually; and, two, obtain competitive bids in additional, in addition to the city council approval, where the purchase or contract price will exceed $20,000 annually. And whereas, the estimated annual value of the contract with M G V Trucking LLC will be more than $2,500, but will not exceed $20,000. And whereas, funds for the contract are available in the city's current budget. And whereas, procurement of such services from M G V Trucking LLC without competitive bid is allowed under Section 2-52 and 2-56 of the Magnolia Code, Arkansas Code annotated 1442-107, Arkansas Code annotated 1458-303. Now therefore be it resolved by the Magnolia City Council in regular session assembled, that the mayor shall be, and hereby is, authorized to contract with M G V Trucking LLC to provide hauling services at, for the city upon substantially the same terms and conditions as those stated in the contract attached hereto as Exhibit 1.
Questions or comments?
Is this contract or services Exhibit 1? It doesn't say it's Exhibit 1, but is it?
It is.
So that is Exhibit 1, okay. Thank you. And do we know on page five, on page four, what the rate of, will be per hour, per ton? Is that how we determine it?
Most of the asphalt's going to be per ton. We've not set that yet. I just had to fill in the blank there. The other three contract haulers obviously don't work for the city that Jerry's talked to, so right now there's four contract haulers that'll be working for us. We're going to haul asphalt by the ton, as I was visiting earlier with the, with council member. When you put it out by the ton, that puts, you get more product in the pavement than you do by the hour. So anything that can go across the scales, you want to pay by the ton. If you're working out of a dirt pit, you have to pay by the hour because you can't scale it. This will be scaled because we will pay the asphalt plant, whoever we do business with on that.
So this is going to make our process more speedy, I guess, but it's not going to cost our, our, our city drivers, and it's not going to hurt them and their salaries or their...
No.
I mean, that's the only thing, only thing I can think of would be a...
This is the thing, no, sir, this is what we've got. All we're, all that's being asked of you tonight, and yes, that resolution can be a little confusing. I am making you aware that my daughters would like to work for the city, just as Ms. Peterson made you aware of her husband.
Right.
Just like Mr. Jefferson made you aware of his sponsors, nonprofit. My daughters get no more, no less. Our city employees will be busy running the paving crew. We have always said we're going to contract the trucks, because we've got to keep that hopper full, because once that machine heats up, we've got to keep hot mix and a hot machine in order to lay streets. So Jerry and I have talked and worked on this for a year about it. We will contract the trucking. Everything else will be city employees on city equipment. We have shop, we're shopping currently for an oil truck to put the oil sheen down prior to paving. That's the piece of the puzzle that we're missing, so we'll be coming to you soon with that. I don't sign the bonds until July of '25. We don't expect paving work to start until October. Andy can start immediately with the engineering after the first of the year. When I sign the bonds, the water and sewer projects can start immediately. So all we're asking tonight is making you aware of the fact that my daughters want to work for the city.
Right. This keeps us, the law requires that the council approve this, and this keeps us square with the law and with the auditors, right?
With the auditors, yeah.
And that was my connection, was the same as when we did written, husband, for the age back.
Same, yep. And as I told a member earlier, I may not even be available then. We're just trying to secure as many people as we can, because we know that's going to be the critical key to, critical piece to the council.
I make motion we approve this resolution. Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're going to pull the ordinance on parking. What I would like to do after visiting with Mr. Nelson, Mr. Jefferson, you're in the streets about every day. We'd like to get a committee together. I really need two members, but in talking to Mr. Jefferson, you're the only other option member that's got that free time, and I need to wait until after the special election. But we're going to need two council members. David Nelson, I'm going to ask planning commissioner Christine Durham to set on that, and I'm going to ask our city attorney to sit in on this, but we, what you were to look at tonight is, is David and I feel it's just more than what we're asking. We're going to go back, let's go, let's just go back and get that down a little bit. So we want to get input from, from the planning commission, input from the council, input from the city attorney, and give the city, excuse me, from the city inspector, and give the city attorney more direction as to what we're looking for. So that's being pulled tonight. Mr. Jefferson, can you serve on that capacity that probably won't meet until after the holidays?
Yes.
Let's move on to resolution.
Fair, I could really agree. Just a flag, so one of the, one of the things is, there is in fact some overlap between the zoning code for certain things, and then what we have in our Magnolia code and in state law, and so we got to be careful about how that all fits together, and we don't want to require something of future development that we're not requiring right now, and vice versa, and so, several moving parts, but I'm confident we can get to the we need and want.
And I'm going to jump on her coattails just a second, because we have talked about this over different councils over 14 years. We have ordinances on the books from the 1950s, 60s, 70s, 80s. We really need to get a couple of folks that can look over those ordinances, and, you know, there used to be one, you couldn't ride a bicycle on city sidewalks. You know, we've all heard, you can't spit on the sidewalk. You know, the world's changing. We need to go back and look at some of the laws, because in defense of council, you know, she's got to uphold the law or advise us on what to do, but if it's our old law that's stopping us from doing this, then we need to fix our old law. Just a thought, y'all give it consideration, because it will be timely. We have a resolution, the finance committee did meet last week. Are we all in agreement to put, okay. So we're going to read a resolution now to approve the 2025 budget. Ms. Leader, when you're ready.
A resolution providing for and adopting for the city of Magnolia, Arkansas, for the 12 months beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditures therein provided for, declaring an emergency to exist, and for other purposes. Whereas, the city council has made a comprehensive study of the proposed budget. And whereas, if the opinion of the city council that the schedules and exhibits of financial information prepared and reviewed, revealing anticipated revenues and expenditures for the calendar year appear to be as accurate and as possible for budgetary purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Magnolia, Arkansas. Section 1, this resolution shall be known as the Budget Resolution for the city of Magnolia, Arkansas, for 12-month period beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, reflecting estimated revenues and expenditures as summarized by department on the succeeding pages. All revenues herein are estimated and subject to change, and all appropriations are calculated upon available revenues. Section 2, the respective amounts of funds for each and every item of expenditure classification herein proposed in the budget for 2025 are hereby approved by the city of Magnolia, herein proposed in the budget for 2025 are hereby approved by the City of Magnolia, Arkansas, and are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes herein set forth for the calendar year ending December 31, 2025. Section three, whereas it is necessary for the efficient operation of municipal government that a budget be planned and adopted. Now therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this resolution being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions of incoming treasurer Whitney Peterson about our budget? No. To the media, we have a surplus. We do have a balanced budget. It's not a lot of surplus, but it sure beats the other. Counsel, will you have anything?
No, I appreciate Whitney and Kim and the mayor on their hard work to get this budget presented and balanced. I know a lot of effort goes into it, and, and we really do appreciate y'all doing that, so.
Any other questions or comments about our budget for 2025? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Simpson, second for Ms. Wesson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Our next item is a conversation about a potential lease with Salt Works on forty acres of land the city owns and the minerals, which most of us in the room know it as the old city landfill. Bet you didn't know we had one of those, we've had two. This property is adjacent to the current Columbia County landfill. This is a cap landfill that cannot be disturbed. They know that, we know that. The county is our neighbor to the west, they own eighty acres. I'm not sure who our neighbor to the south is. Columbia County owns eighty, we own forty, and somebody owns forty behind us. Excuse me?
I think it's Steve.
Steve? Steve, somebody owns the forty behind us, is what I'm getting from Mr. Jefferson. But my point to that is, these wells are in a unit, and this will be a unit, so a unit price on royalty would be set. What I, when I had a visit from the landwoman two months ago, she brought a $12,000 check, $300 an acre. We own the minerals, but we are, where are we, counselor? I mean, on leasing the land, I mean, you and I have never got anywhere with that.
Well, so what, Salt Works has offered, essentially they offer their standard lease terms, and there's a, kind of the two main issues that I flagged. It's not that ultimately, it's not that we can't lease, we can, but the lease would need some revision to account for the unique quality of the land, right, that, that these minerals are under. So obviously, it's a cap landfill, the state has certain, and federal government has certain rules and requirements about what you do with cap landfills, and, and just in general, there's not to be disturbance. So, their standard lease includes the regular language that would allow them to do quite invasive things out there on the surface, which we couldn't, we couldn't do that ourselves, and so we can't register someone else to do that. So we need some revision to, to fix that. And then, the, the royalty rate, so, so it's a paid-up lease, and so there's gonna be essentially a flat rate per acre. And, the language that, that allows a royalty on the lithium and the brine, it's not exactly what we would want. There is some language there, but it's not what you would want. And, potentially, depending on how it's interpreted, all we may ever get is just the flat $35 an acre for twenty-five years. And that may be fine if there's nothing that happens out there that's money we wouldn't get, that's a problem, both practically and legally, if it turns out that they hit it big with lithium. Because we have to lease, or sell, or dispose of property for adequate value. So, we've gotta make sure that we're keeping what we would get in exchange for the lease on what should be adequate value. Oil and gas commissions in the process right now of setting up what the lithium royalty would be, so, and we can piggyback off of that. So, I've spoken with the, usually we call him a landman, but a lease woman, I guess, Ms. Blair, and talked over these, these items, and what we've discussed is doing an addendum that would adjust that language. Of course, I would say there'll be a little bit of that concern. With the royalty rate for lithium up in the air right now, that, you know, kind of leaves a blank for finishing out what, what things would be. So, process where we are right now is to, to decide what, what revisions we want to require, what additional terms we want to require, and get that to them, and get, get those hammered out.
What's the, if, if we did this, what would be the city's responsibility if they did decide to do things with the property that violates the cap?
So contractually, that, that would be one of the things that, you know, want language that covers. And so obviously, whatever we would have to do to make some use or do some surface activity out there, they need to, they need to do, right? So whatever requirements we would have, they would need to have. Essentially, we would contractually try to push all of the responsibility and liability to them. Now, would that satisfy the state? Maybe not, right? So it depends on what happened out there. We would potentially still have some of them.
Yeah, but sure, before us, though, is not any of that. So if this went through like this, what's the risk to us?
So, I mean, from a strict contractual standpoint, it would give them the right to go out there and drill a well, just like they would drill a well on any forty in this county, which would be a problem. Now, obviously, they, they know what that land is, and what it used has been, and it's a cap landfill, and I don't, you know, I, I don't think they have any immediate plans to go out there and poke a hole in the ground. We have technology, and things can be unitized, and you can, you can remove resources under the surface without actually physically being on that land, right? And, and I don't think they have the intention of actually disturbing things out there, but we've gotta have the contractual language that, of course, came to work, that we can, we could prevent it. We don't give them the right to do it, and if it happened, we have some language that would give us some cover.
That landfill has been disturbed during my time with Fiber Optic Company, and when I got a call from the state, they seemed to be concerned at the moment, but then they realized we're under no obligation to them anymore. They didn't help me try to collect damages from these people. DEQ, in my opinion, didn't care after we weren't in their sights, because that thing had been closed long enough. So if you go out around the edge of the county road in the westerly south, in front of the current landfill, and west headed back to County Road Five, you'll see, if you'll look, you'll find some trash in the ditch where they just switched on through and laid the pipe, so, you know, yes, counsel's right. This company's not gonna drill a well on us, but they're after the mineral that's in the ground. We've had a conversation, you know, partly to blame to would be this company, because they said that I couldn't sign the lease, which if they'll read Arkansas law, I could, but they didn't accept it, so now it's in front of you, so what do you guys want me to do? What do y'all want done?
So, did I hear you correct, this really not a good thing to just accept this right now, until that language is in place?
I mean, hopefully that's the council's decision, but, yes, my advice is that we need to make some revision and get some language in there that we need to see before you would accept the terms of that lease. Now, as a procedural matter, if you wanted to take action on this tonight, you know, it's within your realm that you could, someone could make a motion to, you know, approve it, subject to language that does X, Y, and Z, or however you wanna phrase it, or the other option would be to take it up at the, at the next meeting, and, you know, ideally by then, hopefully, would be goal being by then, we would have those specific terms hammered out with Salt Works, as to what the, what the parties, assuming that they get all the approvals from, that they need, that what the language actually would be.
So my, my challenge is, I, I think we, when we look for you to come back, it takes longer than we think to come back with the revisions. So do you think by next council meeting, we could have the revisions, or is it going to be too difficult for a December meeting?
I have planned, I have planned, I have a plan.
Or a January meeting?
I, I think, I would anticipate that we would be able to have it for a January meeting. We, we don't control all of that, and obviously, they, you know, Salt Works has to work it up there, their chain, but getting it to them and letting it work that process, I would anticipate would, it would be in line for January meeting.
How time-sensitive is the deal? I mean, are...
It was, it was sensitive two months ago. Check's been laying there for two months, you know?
Yeah.
Two more months isn't gonna kill it. If it does, then it wasn't meant to be.
Well, not so. If we made the motion to approve with the caveat that, that it's gonna be that we adjust the contract, then it doesn't have to come back to the council, it just, we let y'all work it out, and we're done with it.
Potentially it doesn't, it, it, there's a potential it may need to, if, if there's some language that, you know, that we're wanting, but that we can't get agreement on, and so, you know, the, what's being proposed is something less than what my marching orders have been, and then I would need to come back to you and say, what do you want to do? But potentially not have to come back, there is outside chances. If there's a sticking point that, that you might need to review that.
But you would know what I signed because you'd have a copy of it. I wouldn't sign this without you knowing it. Even, it is $12,000, it's well within the right to, but I want you to be aware of it. And if you want the council to work on that, and you wanna have something in front of you in two weeks, then, you know, let's get Thanksgiving out of the way, turn it loose, email it. We need to call a special meeting, which we'd have to. If you don't approve something tonight, we'll have to meet to approve it.
I, I make a contingency. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the, is it an ordinance or?
Resolution.
Resolution. Make the, make the motion to approve the resolution, contention upon the language being in the contract as the council has suggested. It's like authorizing the mayor and council and the company to work, work, work out the situation.
Second for Mr. Simpson. So what I heard was, work on the language, do the deal, don't let it get away. Email you guys what we're gonna agree to, once council and I can get together on what we like about it.
Yes.
Any comments or questions from the council on this matter? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? As you know, the planning commission met last week, and they approved the rezoning of a piece of property. Christine, was that sixteen acres? And that is at the corner of West Green and Height Street. That is going to be across the street on Greenside from Sterling Lacy Water Tree.
It's already partially cleared, or mostly cleared back there, so...
Yeah, it, it's clear-cut land, it's right in line with Transmission, Enterties Transmission Station that's there on Green Street. We need to, ordinance read this tonight and get it through so construction can start. They wanted to start last month, so Candy...
Before you read, there's a, there's a spelling here. Caught that located as an...
Oh, is that in the, in the top? Oh, I see it, thank you. So the description doesn't have to be read. No, you can, just eighteen acres, eighteen acres in the first quarter, essentially.
Would the council like to hear the ordinance, or would you like to have it read by title only?
Title only.
Title only. Is there a motion? Will you like this ordinance? There's a motion for Mr. Simpson to put this on title only? There's a second from Mr. Sisson. Simpson, Sisson? We need a roll call vote, please.
David Sisson.
Yes.
Jeff White.
Yes.
T.O.S. and.
Yes.
Bo Pettit.
Yes.
Jamie Waller.
Yes.
Wayne Simpson.
Yes.
Steve Nipper.
Yes.
James Jefferson.
Yes.
Title only, please, ma'am.
And ordinance, rezoning portions of the north half of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 11 Township 17 South, Range 21 West, Columbia County, Arkansas, owned by Scenic Hill Solar LLC, and located at Height Street and West Green Street, Magnolia, Arkansas, from R1 Residential District to C3 Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map.
Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to put this ordinance on its second reading by title only? Motion for Mr. Pettit, second for Mr. Nipper?
Roll call.
Please.
David Sisson.
Yes.
Jeff White.
Yes.
T.O.S. and.
Yes.
Bo Pettit.
Yes.
Jamie Waller.
Yes.
Wayne Simpson.
Yes.
Steve Nipper.
Yes.
James Jefferson.
Yes.
And ordinance, rezoning portions of the north half of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 11 Township 17 South, Range 21 West, Columbia County, Arkansas, owned by Scenic Hill Solar LLC, and located at Height Street and West Green Street, Magnolia, Arkansas, from R1 Residential District to C3 Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to put this ordinance on its third and final reading by title only?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion for Mr. Nipper, second for Mr. Simpson?
David Sisson.
Yes.
Jeff White.
Yes.
T.O.S. and.
Yes.
Bo Pettit.
Yes.
Jamie Waller.
Yes.
Wayne Simpson.
Yes.
Steve Nipper.
Yes.
James Jefferson.
Yes.
And ordinance, rezoning portions of the north half of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 11 Township 17 South, Range 21 West, Columbia County, Arkansas, owned by Scenic Hill Solar LLC, and located at Height Street and West Green Street, Magnolia, Arkansas, from R1 Residential District to C3 Commercial District, and amending the officials of re-zoning map.
It's been a long time, but I think that ordinance passes.
No, we, you need to vote on it.
Need to vote on it. I told you it's been a long time.
Later adopting.
All right. So is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Jefferson? Second for Mr. Pettit. Would you call the roll, please?
I will. David Sisson.
Yes.
Jeff White.
Yes.
T.O.S. and.
Yes.
Bo Pettit.
Yes.
Jamie Waller.
Yes.
Wayne Simpson.
Yes.
Steve Nipper.
Yes.
Now it is passed. Is there an emergency clause?
There is not, but there does need to be.
So I know that Scenic Hill Solar is watching tonight, so they can start the work in the morning. Good. Very quickly, I wanna thank the voters of the City of Magnolia that came out this past election and voted to allow us to make the infrastructure needs to our city in preparing for the bromine, lithium, timber, and anything else that we can do, southern aluminum growth. For those of you that attended council on Larry Tally's funeral Saturday, I wanna thank you for that. I wanna thank his family for allowing him to serve all the years that he served. He may have been quiet, certain where Mr. Sisson's at, and he may have said, I don't know about all that a lot, but he was a wise old owl, and I'm thankful for his service to the city and his family for allowing that. I do wanna take a minute on behalf of this council, the entire city employees, and all our department heads, to say happy Thanksgiving to the entire city, county. Merry, merry Christmas from Angela and I to all of you. Unless something happens between now and then, I do not plan to call a December meeting, but wanna make you aware, on December the 30th, we don't do this often, but we're throwing a big party in City Hall from three to five. That is a Monday, and we are about to lose eighty-nine years of service in the retirement of Russell Thomas at Wastewater. Kim Newell has been our city treasurer most of my time. Dave Lindsay just retired from the fire department. Mr. White, Mr. Waller, I wanna thank y'all. Y'all made it easy. Looking forward to the future, you got big shoes to fill, young lady. Counsel, y'all have anything at this time?
Well, sponsors non-profit will be, have, serving a Thanksgiving dinner over at the Meadowbrook Lane Hospitality House, that's the Housing Authority, Magnolia Housing Authority, and that's for November the 28th, 12 noon to 2:00 PM, for the residents and anyone else that would like a Thanksgiving dinner.
Anybody else? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adjourn? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? We stand adjourned. See y'all next year.